I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four at five thirty-one P. M. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill two-five-sixty, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in-person and virtually using the Zoom platform. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Please stand for the flag salute. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have three items on the agenda tonight. First is a presentation from West Lynn Youth Council. Second will be approval of a liquor license request. And third will be a resolution regarding the city administrator's employment agreement. Staff, will you introduce item number one, please?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. As you know, we're in the process of creating a Gladstone Youth Council, and tonight we get a special presentation from West Lynn's Youth Council. And so I'm gonna introduce Anamika, Vanessa, and Sabrina. They have a presentation to provide you tonight, and Sophia was not able to make it tonight, and neither was Danielle. So if you're ready, you can go ahead and start your presentation.
And don't make the mistake I did. Be sure you push the button, and then the microphone will be on for all of you. It does not move, but the arm on the end moves, so you can aim it toward the person who's speaking. Welcome, and go ahead.
Nice to meet you. We're from West Lynn's Youth Advisory Council, and we're excited to tell you a little bit about the YAC. Okay, I'm Anamika.
I'm Vanessa.
And I'm Sabrina.
Let me put it in. Okay, the arm does move.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so first we have a brief mission statement from the West Lynn Youth Advisory Council that states mission: Engage a representative group of West Lynn youth to effectively serve the city through community-oriented discussions and projects aimed at providing recognition and understanding for the issues that affect youth and our peers in West Lynn.
Okay, so a little bit about Youth Advisory Council in West Lynn. So we are a completely student-led group, and we have different student officer positions that facilitate our meeting. We have the co-chairs that lead the session. We have the secretary, who manage the minutes and the meeting notes, the treasurer to organize the budget, and we also have a communications chair. Some of our long-term goals are to build relations with city elected officials, staff, and residents to create civic engagement opportunity for our local youth, and we also advise the West Lynn City Council on issues that are affecting local youth and the community as a whole. And we also identify and advocate for the needs of local youth through different service projects and events.
Okay, to give some idea of what direction a YAC might choose to take, we have a list of some of the things we've done over the last couple of years. Yeah, last year was the first time since before the pandemic that the West Lynn YAC went to the Oregon Youth Summit, so that was really exciting. And the two thousand and twenty-four Oregon Youth Summit is coming up next Friday, so I know Danielle is in the process of registering us for that, and we're looking forward to that. So this list is pretty current. We've met with school officials and community leaders about substance abuse prevention and drug overdose resources in West Lynn. Last year, during around the wintertime, we went to a West Lynn City Council meeting and gave a presentation about a draft of their communications plan that they were working on. When I-205 tolling was a really big issue in West Lynn, we wrote a written recommendation and submitted that to ODOT's public comment period, so that was included in the public record. This school year, we've been focusing a lot on city planning, so we've talked about sustainability and supporting upcoming long-term projects. So we've appointed youth representatives to steering committees for our recreation center and the waterfront, and I think there might be a new steering committee forming for Highway forty-three as well, but also just supporting engagement on those projects long-term. I've tried to encourage and support guest speakers at being at all of our meetings, because I feel like that's been a really good way, in my experience, to make sure everyone has a baseline understanding of a topic that's relevant to the city, and maybe inspire some enthusiasm by listening to an expert. So we've had people from Oregon Youth Line, yeah, our SRO, I think someone who had founded a recovery high school near West Lynn. We've had people from the Public Works Department a lot. And then at our last meeting, we had our Clackamas County Clerk to talk about voting. So a variety of people, and the YAC has a lot of opportunity to take on different projects and make a lot of connections. So I'm excited to see how that list continues to evolve.
All right, next, we have steps to a successful YAC, and our West Lynn YAC was started by a former high school teacher and city council member in two thousand and sixteen. And since then, the YAC has helped the West Lynn City Council in advising their decisions with city planning and providing a youth perspective on the topics. And so we have allowed them to receive these perspectives for short-term and long-term projects, and we've also aided in direct lobbying to the city and state. And so our current approach with meetings is having those guest speakers that Anamika was talking about inform us on city projects and have us sort of give our input on what we think of those projects and give ideas for future progress on those as well.
Okay. And then we were just gonna talk a little bit about each of our individual experience. Sophia couldn't make it tonight, but if you wanted to know some of the reasons why she joined YAC, those are there.
Why I decided to join YAC was primarily to amplify voices and concerns of underrepresented demographics in the community, especially those who usually go unheard and don't really have their voice represented in city planning or decision-making, and also advocate for future generations through city planning. And so while we've been talking about the Highway forty-three project, a big priority in that is making our city more walkable and promoting more environmentally conscious decisions when constructing new additions to West Lynn. And also, taking a leadership role in the community was important to me and just learning more about the local government, because I felt I wasn't as involved as I could be before. And informing others and helping others become involved is important to me, as well as they get to have their input in decisions that are important to everyone.
My name's Sabrina, and this year I am the co-chair along with Anamika on the YAC Subcommittee. So my YAC experience really started with a hope to become a more active member in the community through providing youth voices on actions taken by the city council. And while I'm in YAC, I have a lot of opportunity to advocate for projects or issues that I'm really passionate about, to have this meaningful impact, to reflect a Western youth perspective. And overall, this has just have been a really meaningful opportunity for me. It's sometimes when you think about it, it's more than the impact you're trying to create, but also the connection you get to make as a high school student and the insight in how our city is governed and shaped.
Yeah, definitely. I think that the YAC is super valuable, because it's really flexible, and it really is what you make of it. I had hoped to use the opportunities through the council to advocate for perspectives that prioritize things like sustainability and recognizing the complexity that's necessary when so many people come together in a city. So I think that all of the guest speakers over the years really helped me understand my place in my community over growing up in West Lynn. And I know that people say it a lot, but I really think that having it emphasized to me how community and city leaders really do want to look to us and look to the future has been an experience that made me more hopeful about my community. And yeah, I think that's all we have. I'm really sorry Danielle couldn't be here tonight, in case you had questions for her, but yeah.
Well, thank you for coming. It's very interesting to me to hear about the forming of relationships and the understanding of the process of how government works is so central to what is important in this for a lot of you. Sometimes you might be thinking, what can we get that will benefit us as youth? But you're also looking at what can you learn and how can you be a part of something which will continue in the future because of the relationships you formed, and that's, I found that very impressive. I want to allow the city councillors to ask any questions they might have or share any comments they might have. Counsel Roberts, I see you pushed your button.
I'm curious for you guys. So one thing your guys' council does that many others don't is you have the co-chairs. So how come you follow that model, and how would you say that works better differently from having one presiding officer?
Yeah. That was actually a bylaws update. This year, we did have a chair, I think, and a vice chair in previous years, but we found that having two chairs would probably facilitate more collaboration. I think there was an experience where there wasn't a ton of collaboration between the chair and the vice chair, and that's something that we wanted, so that not all the responsibility was just on one person, and forming the direction was shared by more people.
Very interesting. Thank you.
Counsel Alexander.
Yeah, I'd ask, I just wondered, how do you guys work that, because we need the youth involved. So does your, if you go to West Lynn High School and you live outside the city limits, you can still participate?
I think so, yeah. I think it's anyone going to West Lynn High School and anyone who lives in West Lynn, even if they're home schooled.
And if they live outside of West Lynn but go to West Lynn High School, and then if they go to West Lynn High School but live outside of West Lynn, it's, so just you just want the youth involved, right? So that's open for everybody. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Huckabee.
Thank you. So with your student officer positions, Counsel Robert spoke about your co-chairs, but with the secretary, treasurer, and communications chair, do you feel that you guys are more efficient and get more done having individual people responsible for those tasks? Because I don't think a lot of the youth advisories have these specific positions, right? Or they kind of varies? Okay.
I think all of the youth councils I've seen do have delegated. I think that we are the only one I know of that have a communications chair, but I do think they have one or two chairs. Some of the bigger ones have like two, three, four chairs. Maybe, I know Hillsborough is a super big YAC, and we met them at the Oregon Youth Summit, and they had an interesting way of running their student officer positions. But I do think that it has been helpful to make sure that one person is kind of the point person for a certain responsibility on the council.
I see a lot of themes between all of your guys', you know, why you chose to participate. And one very big theme seems to be representation. So kudos to you guys for being willing to step up in your community and provide that representation to your peers.
Counselor Rieckel.
Yeah, I just had a question. You had mentioned that you, that this opportunity, and maybe this is not something that you all are able to answer, but you had mentioned that you had home school students have the opportunity to participate as well. Do you know how that outreach was done in your community to try and recruit those members if they were interested?
I'm not sure. I think Danielle would probably know that a little bit better. Like Danielle, our staff liaison, she's also the communications director for our city, so she did a lot of the formal outreach for YAC recruiting last summer.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
The application to be a member of the Youth Advisory Council is on the city of West Lynn's website, and so I think that's how I first noticed it. And I think anyone who wants to become more involved in the community can easily find ways to get involved there. And one way of getting involved is an application to the Youth Advisory Council.
Counselor Cook.
Hi. It seems like you guys have a really heavy engagement in planning and infrastructure planning in particular. What is your process or mechanism for being involved? Do you attend planning commission meetings? Are you flagging specific projects that you think have a long-term impact that you're deciding to get involved with? You know, how do you engage on the planning side?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about this. So mostly, we just start with the guest speaker that Anamika kind of mentioned. We started with hearing about from them and see what kind of project they are working on. For example, last year, we, do we have a guest speaker for steering committee, or is it just the thing?
I don't know about last year. I mean, this year, like Chris Myers and then John Floyd.
Yeah, so Chris Meyer, who was working on the Highway forty-three project, we have, we invited him over to our meeting, and then he kind of talked about the Highway forty-three project that he is working on, and that's how we kind of started working with him on that. And then for different planning, I have been a part of the Western Steering Committee, trying to build a new recreation center in West Lynn. So a lot from that is just, I also attend their planning committee and see, just communicate and engage with the conversation as well.
Yeah, I think it's a mixture of us requesting people to be at our meetings as guest speakers and then hearing about the planning projects that they're working on, and then people requesting to come to our meetings to talk about the projects they're working on. So it's either or.
And then as you guys have feedback from that, so like you have guest speakers who speak about a project, and then as you guys have feedback, how do you usually deliver that feedback to city leadership?
I think for our most recent one, we're having Chris Myers, one of the planning staff, who came to talk to us in like September. We're trying to get him back at our meeting for February, so it could be having those guest speakers back and having just them directly talk to us at that meeting. But yeah, we've gone to city council before, we've gone to different meetings. So if that's not feasible, then we could also find another outlet to reach them again.
Very cool. I think your engagement in that area is really rad, because infrastructure is the kind of thing that, you know, it starts now, but it affects many future generations.
Yeah.
I think another part of our involvement in the city planning is public engagement and helping the community become aware of what is in the process. And so right now, I think Chris Myers was the one who asked us to come up with the art contest. So I think a lot of people were wondering how they were going to get city approval of the infrastructure and the look of it and the aesthetics, sort of. And so he was just prompting us to come up with a way to get people involved and to get more designs, I guess, for the new infrastructure.
Community vision.
Yes. And so I think we have certain people on the council who are trying to come up with a way to sort of get an art contest going or some sort of blueprint for it. I'm not sure, but something to do more with the aesthetics. And so I think us having those connections as younger people in the community is very valuable into letting everyone become aware of what's in store for the future.
Counsel Garlington.
I have a couple of questions, and you might not know the answer, and that's okay. So you talked about that you had seen the application online at City Hall or on the city website. Do you, do you two remember where you saw your, your lead into, or do you recall the other places where you may have seen an application?
I think when I joined, I had seen it also on the city website, but I know that Danielle posted like a link or some information on the city Instagram and Facebook. I'm not sure if there were other avenues.
Yeah, I don't think so. I also applied through the city website.
Okay. So that was all, you don't recall seeing it maybe at your school website or posters at school of any kind?
Okay. Yes, I had submitted it to our school, I don't know what it's called, the newsletter administrator at our school, and asked her to put it in like the student section. So that did end up getting in.
That did get there. Okay. And then your group, how many people are in your group? How many youth do you have as members?
I was gonna say fifteen, too, like somewhere around fifteen.
And do you recall when you filled out applications, was there a no-cut policy? Or were, or did you have to go through interviews?
The new members did do interviews. I think that in the bylaws, there is some kind of specification that it's like ten to twenty, maybe, I feel like ten to twenty youth.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as a member, everyone who is a member gets to go to the, the Youth Summit then? That's not a chosen group? Everybody gets to go?
Yes, anyone interested.
Okay. And then your guest speakers, when you say your speakers come, is that a meeting that is open to the public if somebody wanted, just wanted to hear what they had to say? Or is that specifically for your group to engage in an, not an activity, in learning what, what's coming forward? Or do you have other people that show up because they want to hear what they have to say?
All of our guest speakers just come at our regular meetings, which are open to the public, like the information is posted on the city website. I don't think we usually have a lot of spectators, but if they wanted to, they could come.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your information.
I have one more, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Counsel Huckabee.
Leading into what Counsel Garlington was just asking, I was interested specifically in your meeting with the SRO about drug overdose resources. Was that just at your council meeting, or was that open to more members of the public?
Um, I think that was last year, and at that time, our vice chair had arranged the meeting, because he was like friends with the SRO. That was a really informal meeting, and that was just with the YAC.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel Alexander.
So you're going, like, and you're, out of your fifteen members, are you keeping a balance? Is it like freshmen, sophomore, junior, seniors? Do you have more of one or a lot of people?
Um, I don't think there is a limit for the grade level, but this year, I think we don't have any freshmen, right? We only have one sophomore, and then we have tons of seniors. So next year, we're hoping to recruit more new members.
Thank you.
Counsel Garland.
Talk to me about how you're gonna get those other youth involved. How are you gonna find someone to take your place? What's your plan?
Yeah, I think, yeah, recruiting, I don't know, yeah. I cannot think of a better word than recruiting, but you know, advertising, finding people, and making sure that people know about the opportunity for the YAC was something that we didn't think about last year until like May. And we ended up having a record number of people in the YAC this year. So that was really exciting for me, seeing the, you know, evolution from last year to this year. There's definitely a lot more engagement with more people. And I think, was it, what was it called, the city council annual report that we submitted? One of the challenges we listed was not having people from all the grade levels, because that's something we really wanted. So I think, yeah, there's a lot of outreach techniques that I've seen people use just around our school, you know, going into classrooms, sending targeted letters. I think there's a lot of different things we could do if we really wanted to get like freshmen, sophomores, because you know, those are the youth of, so yeah, I think that will definitely be a priority this spring, because we know we do have a ton of seniors. I would say like half of our council is seniors right now.
Okay.
Counsel Rieckel had additional comment or question?
Yeah, just one more question. And if you've already said it, I apologize. How frequently do you meet?
We meet once a month, and occasionally, we've had a special meeting where we like cut it in half, and we meet two weeks from our last meeting, but usually just once a month.
Okay. And do you meet like during school, while school's in session, or is it after-school program?
Um, we meet after school. Our meetings used to start at four, and then we realized there was a weird gap between school and the meeting. So now they start at three-thirty, right after school.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Would you guys mind providing a copy of that annual report to our staff so that we can see that? I'd love to take a look at that.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you so much.
Just a couple of other questions. You mentioned Danielle. I see her listed as community relations coordinator. So she is a member of the city staff, is that correct?
Yes, she's our staff liaison, and then our liaison to the council is Mayor Rory.
Okay, so you do have a council liaison as well. Just curious, does having what I think is the youngest mayor in West Lynn, who, you know, came to involvement in the city through advocating on behalf of some needs of high school students regarding parking, I think was one of his big issues at the start, do you think that has influenced the awareness and involvement of students in your community?
I can, yeah. Okay. I, yeah, I think that, like, when I first joined the YAC, Rory would show up to all the meetings, and he was definitely someone who would be there to support us. So I think that having him be so engaged, because he was engaged like just a few years before, has definitely been a factor in adding some energy to the YAC.
Very good. Although, you know, it did start even before he, while he was still in high school, I don't know if he was a part of it himself, but we just, we're seeing a trend in a lot of cities, including this one, of younger people getting, being interested in how cities work and wanting to take an active role. We've heard from several different youth councils, you probably know some of the other ones in the area. We learn something from each presentation. It provides us with other options when we go to make choices of how we will prepare bylaws for a group that we want to organize. I think that's already in the works, is that right?
Yes, we have a draft ordinance, and we have Counsel Roberts and Counsel Huckabee, and I'm meeting Friday to strategize meeting with the school district.
Very good. So we're, we're working in this direction, and as I say, we're very appreciative of hearing how different cities do things differently and what kind of interests we might elicit from our own community, hoping that it's very similar to what you have found, and that there will be the same enthusiasm and desire to work on projects that impact people currently and will impact the generations in the future. So I want to thank you all for coming. Do you have anything else that you wish you would have said that you want to share with us?
No, I just think it's really cool that you're interested in forming a YAC. So yeah, thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right. We do have a couple more items on our agenda. You are not under any obligation to stay and hear them.
I would say the future is bright.
Yes. All right. One of the things that the city council in Gladstone does now and then is weigh whether or not it will approve an application for a liquor license for local business. So Counsel or Administrator Betts, can you introduce this next item for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, in your packet, you have a liquor license application. The name of the entity is Colvin Oil LLC. The trade name of the business is Pinnacle, and this business is located on McLaughlin Boulevard. I believe this is across from where the Taco Bell is and by where the Mini Mart is, the Texaco Mini Mart. Is that correct? Yes. So we're asking the council if you would like to accept the approval. They're going through an ownership change, and staff had no issues with the application.
Good to know staff had no issues. Are there council members who have concerns or questions before we?
I just have a question, because I'm not familiar. So this will be education for me. On two-dash-one, there is a box checked called off-premises, but I'm not seeing what exactly, is that the distillery is off-premises? Is that how I'm reading that?
Well, this would be for off-site, to take alcohol off-site, so like selling beer and wine.
Oh, so, okay, I got it. Okay, thank you.
So is that the distinction between selling it for people to take with them versus selling it for people to consume on premises? Okay. So this means you buy it and take it. Okay, got it. That's, that's helpful. So this is not what you would call a drinking establishment. This is a, a retail sales.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Texaco Mini Mart there.
Right. Cash and carry. There's, that's another, okay. Are there other questions from council members? Would anyone like to, well, I, what, we don't have staff recommendation in terms of, of a motion, so I will just ask someone to make a motion of what they think would apply in this case.
I will motion to approve the liquor license proposed to us, agenda item number two.
All right. It has been moved by Counsel Roberts, seconded by Counsel Alexander. Any further discussion? All right. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counsel Garlington.
Yes.
Counsel Roberts.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Rieckel.
Yes.
Counsel Alexander.
Yes.
Counsel Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. Yes, the application as submitted is approved. All right, the last item on our agenda, I believe will be presented to us by Chad Jacobs, our city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. For the record, Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. So at your last meeting, you asked if we could sit down, uh, with, uh, city administrator Betts and talk about her contract and bring a new contract forward for your consideration. Uh, because her existing contract will expire as of June thirtieth this year. Uh, we also did so in coordination, uh, your direction with, uh, Council President Roberts and, um, had him give some input before we provided you all with a copy of the contract for your consideration. So tonight we have before you a new contract proposed with city administrator Betts. It would replace her existing contract and if you approve it, it would take effect February first of this year. Uh, the contract itself, the basic structure of the contract just mirrors her existing contract, except we made seven changes, which are outlined in the staff memo to you. I think the biggest change, uh, for your consideration is instead of having a set term, we've changed this to an indefinite term. It doesn't change the ability of the council whatsoever to be able to, uh, terminate the city administrator if you so desire. It's basically, uh, she continues to serve at your pleasure. Um, but it is a trend that we're seeing in other city manager, city administrator contracts where they're getting rid of, or they're requesting, uh, getting rid of terms and just having indefinite contracts. And so that's something that was proposed and that's probably the biggest change. Some of the other changes are a non-substantive in nature and some of them, um, are really just sort of changing around the financial aspects to allow some more flexibility for city administrator Betts to have her, uh, deferred compensation, her retirement funding, uh, a little funded a little more. Overall, this proposal is not have any cost impact on the city. Uh, any of the money that's being donated to her deferred compensation, uh, city administrator Betts proposed and we gratefully accepted that she would take a pay cut in exchange for that money being put into her deferred compensation. So in essence, she's having five percent of her salary put into deferred compensation by the city. But at the same time, she also took a five percent pay cut to pay for that. Um, so it's a cost neutral proposal. Uh, actually in the long run, because she did that, our COLA increases will actually be a little bit less. So, you know, arguably it does save the city a little bit of money. Um, the only way that this could potentially cost the city some additional money is some of the changes we made to, uh, city administrator Betts's ability to cash out vacation time. As you know, uh, she accrues vacation time like other employees. However, she has not been able to take vacation time because she's been working so hard. And so, uh, she typically sometimes has to cash that out. Uh, she's, has that ability now. And so we don't know that there will be any cost increase to the city with her continuing to cash out vacation time. Hopefully she'll be able to take time and won't have to do that. Um, but that's the only situation where there may be some additional costs. But again, that's a bit of an unknown and she still has that ability to do that now. The one change we made here was to create a process to do that because the current process outlined in the city's personnel handbook doesn't really address how the city administrator does this. So we outlined a process to do that. Um, other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. As I said, the seven changes that we made are outlined in the staff memo. And I'm happy to answer questions or, uh, I believe city administrator Betts is here as well if you want to ask her any questions.
All right, Counselor Rieckel, I see your hand up. You had a question.
Yes, actually it's related to that vacation, um, section on page three dash six. I noticed in like the sick leave section, which is section F, it states, it makes a statement regarding if Jackie were to leave her position, that she's not entitled to, um, monetary compensation for the sick leave. Um, I'm just curious, I didn't see anything in here, um, specifying whether she could cash out vacation time in the event that she were to leave. So I just was curious if that's something that needs to be clarified in that section.
Yeah, tha- thank you for that question. Um, the, the way the contract works is that uh, Jackie is subject to the city's personnel policies that are set forth in the personnel handbook unless this contract provides otherwise. And if the personnel handbook doesn't provide something, then we try to certainly plug the holes like we were doing here for cashing out her vacation time. So the basic rule for the city is what is outlined here is that she, like every other city employee, would have the ability to cash out her vacation time upon leaving the city, which is also why we put a cap on the amount of time that people can accrue. So they don't accrue this huge amount of money and create a big liability for the city when they leave.
Gotcha, okay. And then just one other super minor thing, Chad. I noticed on page three dash eight in, let's see, section B, there's a minor typo. It says employee at, at the end of the paragraph there, employee may but is not required utilize a city vehicle for travel. Um, should that say employee may but is not required to utilize a city vehicle? I don't know if that even really matters all that much. I just noticed it.
Yeah, that's, I apologize. That's, that's language from her existing contract, which I'm sure someone in my office helped draft years ago. We'll wait for the typo, but yes, I should say required to.
No problem. I just noticed it. So thank you. That's all.
Attorney Jacobs, just for clarification, you made the statement about Jackie not being able to take vacation time. Uh, you meant not being able to take as much time as her contract, uh, allows her to take. Uh, would that be more accurate?
That would be more accurate.
Okay, all right. Uh, I didn't want people to think that we had her locked in her office. She, she did take some vacation time in, in December.
I don't think legally we can do so.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Uh, Counselor Huckabee.
I don't really have a question per se. I just want to say, um, you know, kudos to Counselor Roberts and you, um, Chad and Administrator Betts for working to make changes on this contract that are either net neutral or benefit the city and Administrator Betts. I mean, it's phenomenal that you guys were able to do that and Administrator Betts for taking that pay cut so you can do deferred comp. I mean, kudos, you guys. It was great.
Are there other questions or comments from councillors? Counselor Garlington?
So I'm, um, I, I have the utmost respect for, uh, our administrator. I think that she does a phenomenal job that, in the last, I don't know, eight years that I've been involved in boards and commissions and the council. I never seen our city get as much done in the that versus the entire time I've lived in Gladstone, that almost nothing got done. And, um, a- a- as much as I am completely for all of this, I have to say that I'm a little bit remiss that I had asked our finance director about this fund that had been newly set up. And I feel like I didn't get an honest answer. And, um, I, I just have to say that out loud because it eats at me if I'm not honest like that. And so, uh, I love this contract. I am all for this contract. But I would have to say, I think the next time something like this comes up and I'm not given a direct, honest answer, that, um, I would have to say I would be a little bit angrier. So otherwise thrilled to death with all of it. Thank you.
All right. Other questions or comments from other councillors?
Um, I appreciate that there is, um, no expiration on this contract because I think what's happened in the past is that, um, Administrator Betts, it's not your role to prod us and remind, um, us that your contract is up. But, um, that has been a challenge for us to track in the past. And I think, um, leaving it open indefinitely until, um, one party, um, decides that a change, uh, would be appropriate. I think that's a, a really thoughtful way to approach it.
I will say, when we had, uh, the finance director here to explain, uh, a deferred compensation plan the last time, I think part of the conversation was that different employees at different levels of their, uh, experience in their jobs and their, and their longevity with the city have different needs at different times in their careers. Um, you know, an entry-level police officer or, uh, public works employee might really want a big salary and need the money now because they're trying to build equity in a home or, or, uh, establish themselves in a community. And an experienced higher-level executive has, uh, is looking to the future. Maybe some of those immediate needs are met and maybe the need is to defer compensation for the future. And that, that's why we wanted to set that up. Um, and I think, um, and I know you probably see it differently, Counselor Garlington. I, I think allowing this administrator to take part in that in a revenue-neutral way, a way that doesn't cost the city additional money and increase the amount in the budget that's going to the administrator, was a way to meet both of those needs, um, sort of a win-win. Uh, because, uh, we're able to provide, uh, the kind of a benefit that helps to attract and retain employees at that executive level. Uh, I, I know we have this open-ended contract now, uh, and, but there may be a time in the future when the city does need to hire someone new and we want to have something in place that allows that person the flexibility to either, uh, receive money in terms of current compensation or to be able to have those funds go into deferred compensation. But that whichever option that individual might choose, the cost to the city ought to be about the same. That's always been the difficulty we had in getting a comparison between the benefits paid to a city administrator in one city and, and the benefits paid to someone somewhere else. It was never apples and oranges because of this big combination of benefits, uh, and, and current comp and deferred comp, uh, that makes it very difficult to, to, you know, compare the total cost and the total package. Um, but I am also supportive of the package and I greatly appreciate the, uh, the quick turnaround on getting this done. On Counselor Roberts's, uh, attention to detail on this and, uh, and the, you know, the feedback that came from individual council members, uh, in, and preparing and making sure that it addressed the, the interests of the majority of the council. Uh, Counselor Roberts.
I'd just like to say thank you to Attorney Jacobs for leading us through this and thank you to Jackie for your commitment to our city. Really pleased with what's going on and happy to continue, uh, down this road. So thank you both.
All right, this has been presented to us in the form of a resolution, so we will need a motion to adopt the resolution. Uh, and, uh, and then we'll be able to act on that and have any further discussion. So would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt resolution one, two, three, three, approving a new employment contract for the city administrator.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Alexander, seconded by Counselor Huckabee. Is there any additional, uh, conversation, um, on this item? Okay, uh, Tammy Ben, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Cook.
An enthusiastic yes.
Counselor Rieckel.
Of course, a hundred times yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, uh, the resolution is approved unanimously. All right, we have a couple other, uh, items, upcoming meeting dates, uh, listed here on our agenda and I want to call them to people's attention. Uh, on January thirty-first, uh, is the annual training that we have for volunteers on boards, committees and commissions regarding, uh, government ethics. Chad, I believe your office is helping to staff that as well. Thank you so much for that. Our next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, February the thirteenth. I know that, uh, there are other meetings and things going on in the community and I hope all of you will avail yourselves of opportunities to become better informed about things going on locally and opportunities to learn. And, uh, and I look forward to, uh, reviewing a draft of the, of the youth council, uh, uh, proposal here because, uh, I, I think we've learned a lot tonight and, and all our future meetings. I thank staff for getting those folks to us. Does anyone, uh, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second.
Counselor Huckabee moved, Counselor Roberts seconded, a motion to adjourn. Uh, Tammy, call the roll, please.
Counselor Rieckel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, uh, the meeting is adjourned at six fifteen PM.